Please join me in leading the question.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the recovery for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairperson, I approve that we approve the following amendments. Add additional certified and classified professional action to consideration, item 3. Add item capital E for small e miscellaneous hourly pay rates. And add item E capital E for small f agreement with, is that Coroner Heights Church? And that would be the additions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alex. Oh, in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I would like to have Bill Wilson come up and introduce a couple of his bus drivers.
I'm Bill Wilson. For those of you that haven't been.
Can I have you over there, please?
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah, come over here.
Abba Chakravarti.
Is there a microphone over there?
No, but it's pleasant.
Okay. Good evening. We'll make this work. It is my pleasure to introduce to you a couple of our top drivers who competed in what's called the rodeo, and it is a competition involving bus driving skills. And really, the short version of it is, I could go on in the short time that I've been here about the professionalism of these two drivers in particular. But it's competing in such a competition is indicative of who they are and what they're about. They're very proud of what they do, they're very committed to what they do, and they're very good at what they do. And they have a healthy rivalry between themselves. For the first time, Melanie Turner beat our own Jerry Guerrero in the competition, and she's very pleased about that, and Jerry will get her this year. It's kind of how it'll work, I think, is his attitude. But I'd like to introduce them to you and ask that you join in congratulating them in many years of work and service and competition. This year at the state level, Jerry Guerrero, come on up here, was fourth. And Jerry is still dressed as he is because Jerry's one of our sub-drivers, and he does that by choice, and we are blessed to have him because I can put Jerry on any route, anytime. And we call it driving blind, where you haven't really had any practice with it, and he runs it like he's been running it for years. And maybe he has just been a little different version, but Jerry, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Melanie likewise does whatever's asked of her. She's runs one of our wheelchair routes regularly, and again, it's one of those, it doesn't matter what I've asked of her. Is there a way you can make this pickup? And if she doesn't think it'll work exactly, she'll still say, yes, but we'll have to do something with these. Otherwise, she just says, yeah, that'll work, and yeah, put 'em on, and we'll make it fly. So Melanie was third place in the state, so we've got the third and fourth place in the state, and congratulations to her as well. So if you'd like to ask them any questions, just go right ahead.
How did it go this year? Didn't both of you win last year too? Was it the same process?
It was the same process, yes. Well, they changed the written test a little bit this year to where it's not, it's more CDL book stuff instead of other questions that come off of the magazines that come out for the transportation. They went more off of the CDL book instead of that stuff this year.
If I understand correctly, that there were additional standards or criteria put on for bus drivers, and was that incorporated in this, or did that happen after your?
I just, I thought that was one of the reasons we ran into a challenge with having a bus driver.
That's with the DOT physical, so that wouldn't be a problem. So where do you all know?
This year was in Salina for state. They moved it around. It's been in Wichita, Great Bend, Goddard, several of the bigger cities.
We have to compete in a district competition before we can move on to state. And the district competition this last year was in Holman, and that's usually April or May before school's out, before the summer ends. We have to do that.
And while we're on that topic, they both talked to me. It's interesting that we don't, we reimburse them for expenses, but it does toss money out of their pocket to go first. And I wonder if maybe that's something we can look into checking, and maybe we can change that around a little bit as we progress, but I may be bugging you about that later.
We have tried to get more drivers involved in it. It's kind of hard to get them involved. We've gone every year for a lot of years. I enjoy it.
Who's one more?
What's that?
Who's placed ahead more?
I guess I have. She finally beat me at state this year. I got first at district. Went to state, I think I rushed myself a little bit, but she got me.
I just wanted to say I thank you all very much. I think it's great that you're able to represent Garden City at the state level in this. But, you know, a lot, sometimes the best part of the day for a lot of students is that ride to and from school, sitting with their friends and, you know, keeping them safe and getting them where they need to go on time. It's amazing. I don't know how you all do it with all the students on the bus. Sometimes just having one or two kids in the car is a challenge to share the rest of us, so.
Well, that's kind of my reasoning going to district or state, either one, because you have to have a highway patrol in there with you. You have to go through these courses. That, you know, is mind-boggling. So then you think about having kids, because you're not doing these courses with the kids, but you're still distracted with the kids. So it makes it challenging for you to understand your bus while you're doing all that.
You all do a great job. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Probably get more than that.
And Mr. Wilson, I think you're still on the hot seat. Talk to us about transportation.
I could spend one of the nights talking to you about my experience over the last couple of months. But I will try and keep it brief. There's additional copies if somebody would like it. Our situation in Garden City, I think, has become well documented. We have been short drivers for a while. And as we began the process of starting this school year, we thought we could pull it off by combining routes and found that we really couldn't, and we were just putting ourselves in a situation that was not workable, not attainable, and unrealistic. And with great support from administration, we have now, I believe, kind of crossed that threshold of making things more realistic and more acceptable. We are not where we want to be yet, but we are far closer. The goal is no kid on a bus more than 60 minutes. And obviously, that can include someone who lives in Calvesta, and those parents and those students understand that if they've got 45 miles to travel, they're not going to make it under an hour in a bus when we're transporting other students. So we're getting closer. We are still working through some of the challenges. We have five drivers in our midst that before last Wednesday knew nothing of Garden City other than where we were located, and so we are in the process of helping them to better understand. We're also in the process of training our own local drivers. And, yeah, it's one of those things, adversity gives you opportunity to show what you're made of. And that challenge has brought forth, obviously, some media coverage and some opportunities to do better, and we are doing better. And we have actually hired two that are trained and ready to roll. In fact, one of them drove her first route by herself today. And that's the good news. The bad news is she just replaced one of the non-five that actually found a different position she'd been looking for for some time. So the good news is we're not one more driver down, but we still need five. We also didn't replace one of the activity drivers that stepped away and retired after last year. And so hiring the two that we have really sort of just gets us right back to where we were with needing five more. We've got six that we've interviewed and that are in, what I like to say is in the queue. They're being trained. And hopefully, as the handout would indicate, one or two of those should be ready by next Monday, ready to roll. Came with CDLs already in hand, so it makes the training process less intensive, and we're more comfortable with where their skills are. And then the other four should be, hopefully, by the following week, ready to roll. So I don't anticipate needing the full 39 days that Dr. Aether requested and you all granted, but we don't have them all trained and ready to roll yet either. So I don't want to make any promises that we can't keep, but we feel pretty good about where we are. A good part of the reason that we are where we are is, you know, we've got some incredibly dedicated people that are professionals. You saw two of them, but most of our drivers are very professional. They take it serious. And we are trying, not that we haven't before, but we're trying to treat them a little more professionally and expect more professionalism out of them and out of our office staff and so forth. When you go to transporting roughly 3,000 kids, give or take, it's a complicated system, and it seems like it ought to be easy. You just find out where they live, and you send the bus there, and you roll. Day one, first full day of school. One of our key transfer buses, a bus that collects a group of students and then goes to another school, and they transfer off to three or four other buses overheated. Well, guess what? Now you've impacted roughly 400 or 500 kids by the time it's all sorted out. And so when you start thinking in that term, and you can imagine what the phone lines do when the students of those families aren't there when we said they were going to. And after about 15 or 20 minutes, any reasonable parent is probably going to get on the phone and say, where's my kid? So we've been dealing with things like that, and it's a complicated system. But with the help of a dedicated staff, I will tell you that they didn't have to, but they were willing to, and they wanted to as much as anything because they wanted to get it right so where we could have a reasonable week. But, you know, Labor Day weekend, I had, you know, there were, I think, three of us that were spent 40-plus hours over those three days just trying to make it right, along with two and three others that have popped in for anywhere from, you know, 10 to 25 hours. And it's a lot of overtime, it's a lot of expense, but to me, it's still the thing of saying, hey, it's got to be done. We've got to get these kids on the bus on time, off the bus on time, and in a manner where they can be set to learn. And we were in an unworkable situation. We're past that. We're excited about the opportunity to actually hire our drivers. And, you know, in the long term, this gives us lots of opportunity to improve the culture. Again, not a horrible place to be, but there were some, there was some, what I would, you know, no offense to anybody, but there was some truck stop mentality at times that, you know, we were just treated that way, or felt like we were treated that way, or that's how they treated others. And we're working on saying, no, we're customer service here. We are the first people that those children see as they come to Garden City schools, and we need to be a smiling face and a positive interaction in their life. And for the most part, our drivers believe that. But for those that haven't displayed that, we've not had any other options because we haven't had the opportunity to do anything about it because we didn't have enough drivers in the first place. They do that. You can't get rid of them if you don't have anybody to replace them. So we're going to continue to get better. We still have some areas that we're working on. Changed the route just today to, again, make things fit better. And as we continue to evaluate and see how things pan out, then we'll continue to get better. Questions? Thoughts, comments?
I kind of have a question. It looks like we have the driver situation. We're managing that, and it's under control. We don't have a plan for that. But when you had mentioned that one of the buses overheated, are we in a good position with the number of buses that we have, and the condition, and the age, and that type of situation? Or how are we doing on that? Because we can handle the drivers, but if our equipment is, I don't know, having problems, then there's other.
I'm comfortable with where we are. We need to continue to update buses, and we'll need to be purchasing buses either, again, I'm not sure what the rotation will be based on how the budget works for sure, but we certainly need to be buying a bus a year or two every other year, that sort of thing. But, you know, when you have 50 in the fleet, the thing that I'm pleased about is, I think we only have one bus that's more than 20 years old. So, you know, that's pretty good for a district that's, quote, like that.
We have the buses, and we keep them in good shape. But that point you pointed out, there was just an example of a bus breaking down, and that does happen from time to time. And what it does happen, it usually happens at the worst possible time and the worst part of the route. Like you said, affecting 5, 4, 500 kids. But, you know, we do have the channel of monitoring the buses from time to time. I think our complete schedule this year, the mechanics, and the fact that we relocate buses out as we do. As you know, we bought a new bus, activity bus, last year, and put it on the line. It was hot. It was creating all kinds of problems.
That's really good, because I think with the distances, then our students can travel with activities and just away the asking. So I think it's important to keep that up to date.
And our mechanics do a great job. And I might add, just so you know, we'll be down two people again for the rest of the week out there because one of our mechanics has had immediate eye surgery, and so they're headed off to Wichita tonight, and his wife just happens to be the dispatch, and so we'll just keep after. But I say that partly to say, we've kind of had an interesting go of it. We have another driver that had to have surgery, and of course, their significant other is also one of our drivers, and so they're in Wichita for the pass. We just got them, one of them back on route today, and another, hopefully, the other will be back Wednesday. But, you know, the great part about this and the thing that I think you can be proud of as board members and as community members about your district is, all we've had to do is ask and their support. And I talked to, you know, Ms. Knoll and, you know, Dr. Aether, Dr. Carleton, and it's like, what do you mean? How can we help? And, you know, we've had personnel from within this ESC that come and help us with phones and help us with interpreting and different things. And so, you know, we'll work through this. It'll be another little challenge, and there will be a few things that get slowed down because we're down a mechanic and down somebody in the office. But we'll get it done because the people there are committed on both ends of it to make it all work.
Yes, sir. What was the biggest surprise coming into this school year that sort of you listed on the sheet here and described a number of things that sort of came together to make this flight challenge? What was the biggest surprise coming into the plans made for transportation this year?
The complexity of the actual system. Yeah, you think about it, and we have a great policy. If we're delivering a kindergarten or younger and there's not the adult there to receive them, then we don't deliver. That's a great policy. But if you have a bus that takes a student to drop them off at the house, and now they don't, and now they have to bring that student back to the school or back to the transportation office, well, guess what? There's 15 minutes that you didn't account for. And if that bus is supposed to transfer other students onto another bus that has maybe anywhere from 12 to 60 kids, all of those kids are impacted because that bus now has to wait for that bus who did the right thing, followed a great policy, to come back and meet them at the appointed time that's now 15 minutes later because they had to go back. So it's just things like that that, you know, you just don't really think about. How tough is it to get my kid from here to there? Well, how much time do you have? And I'll explain it to you, kind of thing. So that was probably the hardest or the biggest wow factor to me. I knew it was going to be, any time you start transferring, it becomes complicated, but...
I applaud your comments here on improve the culture. And we talk about that in terms of schools, but really, throughout the various work areas of the district, you could have a culture that is positive and supportive. I think that overcomes a lot of complexities, and so I appreciate it.
And I think it's important, you know, I've said this of all my career, that we do more than pay at lip service, and I think we're doing that by making sure that we treat these people as professionals. Because there is a tendency by others to say, well, you're just a bus driver, or you're just a custodian, or you just do food service, and those are the ones, or you're just a para, and those are the ones that usually get beat up the most by those comments. And people don't necessarily, I don't think through what they mean and how penetrating those words are to say, oh, that I just, I can't, what do you do without me? Yeah, so.
Well, I want to thank you for all your hard work, personally as well. My third grader came home and couldn't wait to get back to school the next day because of the adventure he had on the bus that day. But I'm glad everything has been working out. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. It's truly appreciated.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, and it's great to work with the staff, and I think you, you know, we're headed in the right direction, and you can count on good things going forward.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't see any first-hand instructions. Do I have a motion with regard to the consent agenda?
I move to read the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. All of us in favor, in the gray section? Opposed? Dr. Dennis.
This is Horace. Good evening. Our focus tonight for this presentation is mathematics, and specifically, the new curriculum materials that we are using, which are referred to as Engage New York. This process really began with the adoption of new standards, college and career-ready standards, firmly known in Kansas as Common Core, by the State Board of Education back in October of 2010. And I know you as a board are very familiar with that process and what happened. These new standards increased the rigor that was expected in our instruction. It changed some instructional focus, and it moved away from just finding an answer to being able to reason mathematically and explain your answer. So any time we make a change like this, there are going to be some glitches, some speed bumps, but we're trying to address them. And tonight, what I would like to share with you is our plan, the progress we've made, and how we plan to move forward from here. Leon Roderick is going to talk you through a little bit of the process that we went through in adopting new materials. And it's a regular process we go through, but the timeline this time was a little bit different, so.
Yeah, we have a cycle of adopting textbooks about every seven years, and we were supposed to adopt new math textbooks two years ago. Well, as we started looking at textbooks, we looked particularly at the Pearson product, the Home and Niflin product, and Trailblazers. And at that time, the committee didn't feel like there was, they were aligned enough to the college and career-ready standards that we should adopt anything because they weren't in alignment enough. So what we decided to do was to develop a transition curriculum. We're pretty excited about that because, you know, we thought we're going to have the best of both worlds here. We're going to be able to take us where we are with our current textbook and add some websites to it, just kind of develop our own. Really, we felt like this is maybe the way of the future with using technology and things like that. So all about December last year, we started hearing from some schools and some teachers that they weren't really happy with the transition curriculum. They didn't feel like it was giving them the guidance that they needed. They didn't have the coherence that they needed. And we had heard that people were starting to use something that was Engage New York. We didn't really know that much about it. So we started looking at that further, and then we thought, well, we've got to do something different. So we called the companies back in, looked at the companies again. The Pearson product had changed a little bit, but it still was not totally aligned with the college and career-ready standards. Trailblazers was not finished yet, and Home and Niflin hadn't changed at all. So what we decided to do was a pilot with Engage New York, and we had several classrooms of teachers who agreed to do that for us. And really, we wanted to know, we wanted this to be a pretty controlled pilot. We really wanted some good data from this thing. So we asked coaches, math coaches, and principals to be in those pilot classrooms, collecting data with their walkthrough forms twice a week. We asked those classroom teachers to do some scripting for us. We really wanted to know, you know, we wanted them to keep a journal and let us know what they liked about it, what they didn't like about it, what was hard about it. And then at the end, we did a survey of all the classroom teachers because we really wanted their input. And I can remember a session in here with the math coaches going through each one of those comments and fitting them into categories and trying to develop patterns out of what they were trying to tell us. And a couple of things really stood out is that they wanted something that was aligned to college and career-ready standards. They wanted something that was, would give them a scope and sequence and really tell them how to teach, because our transition curriculum didn't do that. So anyway, we decided to go with Engage New York for this year, and we're calling it a one-year pilot because we really want to collect some good data on it this year to see how well it's going to work for us.
I know you, yes, sir.
Just for timeline sake, if I understand your explanation, this piloting, this testing, this evaluation happened the second semester of last year?
Correct. Yes.
That initial pilot, and then what we're doing now is essentially implementing this year, and we'll evaluate later this year, toward the end of this year, to determine what direction we go from here. Do we stick with this? Do we do something different?
Another question. We had talked about engaging, first of all, kindergarten, first grade, with the lower. Was that just thought of and implemented the second half of last year as well? Or is it?
I think what you're talking about is the college and career-ready standards. We first implemented college and career-ready standards with kindergarten. The next year we moved on to first grade, and then we had a progression with everybody.
And that was the Pearson product or some of these other products?
That was just the standards. That was just, we tried to align what we already had to those standards, and so we were using the old textbook, trying to align it to the new standards, so.
And those, I guess that really is a great lead-in to where we're going here, because the materials we had were not well-aligned. They didn't align to the instructional shifts that the Common Core called for. And Leon, could you share a little bit more about those shifts?
Yeah, this isn't going to be new to you guys because you presented it in Wichita last fall. But the first one is focus, and it's always been said about Kansas standards, that we're, Kansas standards is that we're a mile wide and an inch deep. And what the college and career-ready standards try to do is to eliminate that and let us go deeper with some of the concepts, but have fewer of them. The next one is coherence, and what that means is you're wanting to develop coherence across... And what that means is you're wanting to develop coherence across grade levels. You're wanting to develop that across one grade level so that you can build upon those progressions year by year so that you can build a good foundation. And then, the last one is rigor. And we're all familiar with rigor. We're wanting kids to be able to get to those higher-level thinking and questioning and reasoning pieces of literature.
So, tonight, what we'd like to share with you is our approach to addressing the instructional shifts that Leanne's talking about. We are also going to share with you some information about parent engagement because parents are such an important component of the curriculum. And getting parents involved is something we really, really want to do a better job of as time goes on. So, the final part of our presentation this evening will deal with how are we going to try to get parents on board with this information? So, this evening, we have several teachers here who are going to present at different grade levels. They'll share with you about curriculum and instruction. You may hear a little bit about assessment as well. As a bit of a side note maybe on assessment, there is more writing, more explanation as a part of assessment in general as a result of the changes in the standards. Those changes are also going to be reflected in the ACT and the SAT this spring. They're both being redesigned to align with Common Core, College of Career Ready Standards. So, you will see changes there, including more explanation and more writing. So, this evening, if I could have the teachers come up and join me, and I'll just ask you to introduce yourselves as you come up. But we'll start with the lower elementary grades, Megan Ford and Jillian Augro.
Hi. I'm Megan Ford. I teach first grade at Jenny Wilson.
I'm Jillian Augro, I'm a ninth to second period at Plaimo.
I'm Diane, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are y'all introducing yourselves at the same side?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Diana Diniston. I'm a math coach at Big Cornellis.
I'm Marsha Taylor, math coach at Runway Eight Six.
I'm Nate Edson. I teach fourth grade at Buffalo Jones.
I'm Ashley Michaelson, eighth grade horse student.
And Jillian and I, we're going to talk about an elementary lesson. And first, Dr. Dennis wanted us to share our, kind of our story, I guess, to you about math. And for me, in the beginning, I was very skeptical of Engage New York. For the past many years, I bought into the idea of kids need to be working hands-on, discovering, inquiry, small group instruction, get away with the worksheets, no more worksheets. And I have been practicing that in my classroom and I had seen it working. So, I was very skeptical and this was kind of the opposite. No more small group, it seemed like, and, you know, no more manipulatives and things like that. And so, the more I got into it, the more I began to like it. And now, it's growing on me and now I'm really, really enjoying it. And I see where kids are learning and where it's building and where it's headed in the future. And I'm really, it's growing on me. I don't, I don't want it to go away after this year because of all the work that I'm putting into it for this year.
And actually, I started it last year. It was not part of the pilot, but I tried pieces of it as I could and implemented it. I taught third grade last year, so it's different than this year because I'm teaching second grade. But the bits and pieces that I did do last year, I liked it. So, now, a new curriculum because I'm teaching second grade and it's, I'm definitely liking what we're doing so far. It was a rough start to the year, changing the pace with the kids because it is completely different. We're used to doing centers and whole group instruction, then centers and small group. And this is completely different, all whole class, all together. But so far, we're trucking away and the kids like the change of pace because we're changing things all the time, doing something different every few minutes.
And at the beginning of the year, my kids have always loved math. It's their favorite time of the day and I just did not know how they were going to enjoy this. And then, yesterday, I had a student pipe up and say, "Oh, I love math." And then, of course, you know, everybody echoed, "I love math, I love math." You know, so I know now that they are enjoying this as well.
Megan and I kind of talked about putting you through a condensed version of what we do every day during math. So, one of the activities, one of the pieces of it is fluency. So, there's many different things we can pick from. What I chose to share with you today is called Take From Twenty. And this is one of my kids' favorite things that we do. And it's, I say nine, you would say eleven. So, you're taking twenty minus nine equals eleven. And they're figuring that out. We have now evolved and they're wanting me to do Take From Hundred instead of Twenty. So, you know, they're challenging, they're wanting more challenges. They're learning these concepts too. So, that's one of their absolute favorites. And when they figure out that number sentence, they're actually writing that number sentence either on a whiteboard or in their notebooks. So, we're keeping track of those different number sentences. I have another fluency activity here. This is called a sprint. And this again is one of those favorites. This is sixty seconds at a time. And they do as many as they can in sixty seconds. And as you can see, some of them are a little more complicated because of the wording, but they get sixty seconds, they do as many as they can. They count how many they have correct when that sixty seconds is over. And then, we stand up and do ten jumping jacks, ten jumps up and down. And then, we try it again because there's a whole nother second half to that. And then, we celebrate their successes of improving. You know, maybe the first time they got nine right and the next time they got sixteen because, you know, we did it once, now we're going to try it again. So, they're really enjoying that and being able to get up and down and do some exercise.
And I'll warn you, I'm going to try and prove a point here. So, on your worksheet, you have ten plus one, ten plus two, ten plus four. It sounds like you're kind of doing some math facts, aren't you?
Yes.
But I heard that Common Core doesn't do math facts. So, why are you using this then?
This is part of what...
You have a rigour decision right there.
Yeah, this is part of what we do.
Well, but Common Core doesn't deal with math facts. How is that...
One of the components of rigor is procedural fluency. And that is, they have to have procedural fluency to understand.
And that's my point. It's one of the myths that's out there that we don't do math facts, that people are going to have to do just your columns that have the sentences rather than seeing ten plus one, ten plus two. Which is why I was trying to tell you I'm going to make a point because I don't want you to think I was against you. So, that's what I was trying to prove here, that we are doing math facts, but we're adding on top of that or scaffolding on top of that so that there's two ways that a child can learn depending on which way is easier for them.
And this is, usually has some kind of correspondence into what our actual objective is for that day. This is just kind of to get us rolling and each grade level looks different. I know your sprints look different than mine too, so...
And I'm passing one down. I apologize. I'm spoiled and take for granted our PowerPoint software and our Elmo's and projectors. I assumed I'd come up here and put it on here and you all see it. But at first grade, it's the same way. I say, "On your marks, get set, go." And then, they turn over their papers and they go as fast as they can. And then, I say, the timer goes off and they throw their hands up in the air and I go around and I highlight where they stopped. And then, they try, they do it again and they try and get one after. I give like a little feed brief on that. They turn it over and they go for a second round. And they try and get one more after that or two more after that. And they're so excited to stand up and say, "I got," today we did a little celebration dance, "I got one or more more right than I did the first time." So, it's fun and it goes fast.
You know, I saw in some of the Common Core stuff, I mean, this stuff's all posted on the web. What you just described for second graders, it describes as happy counting. Is that...
That's a different, that's a different thing. It's one of the fluency activities, but it's...
That particular one was if I say a number, they're to say two numbers after that.
Yeah, and that's kind of...
That's exactly what you said.
Well, no, because this was Take From Twenty that I was talking about. Happy counting is, might be like skip counting, two, four, six. It could be, and one of the things with happy counting that we did at the beginning of the year was more bridging those tens. So, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, you know, bridging those tens gaps.
And today, in my lesson, we had a happy counting...